My name is Ernesto Fernandez-Poltsohn. I'm the Chief of Science Policy at UNESCO. As organizers of this session on Women in Sciences to achieve the Sustainable Development Goals, we invited basically members of the UNESCO family, the extended UNESCO family. We have Annie Black here. She is the Deputy Executive Director of the L'Oréal Corporate Foundation, but she's also the Executive Secretary of the L'Oréal UNESCO for Women in Science Program. Gloria Bondar, she is the UNESCO Chair on Gender in Science and Technology in Flaxo in Argentina. Naveen Kashab, she is a UNESCO Laureate, UNESCO Laureate Laureate, it doesn't sound good, but L'Oréal UNESCO Laureate, that sounds better, from this year. So you're still fresh?
Fresh, very fresh.
And still unbeaten, because there is no new until tomorrow. So you're still the newest Laureate for the Arab region and Africa. Sorry? It's not? And we have Alessandro Bello, who is the Program Officer for the SAGA project for STEM and Gender Advancement, a UNESCO project. So what, why bringing the family together to discuss this issue? And welcome to the family, everyone. For us, for UNESCO, we have, as UNESCO, two global priorities. The first, well, one of them is Africa, so it's a geographical priority, and the other one is gender, is thematic priority. So for us, gender is the only priority that is not geographically applied to every program at UNESCO. That gives us a very strong framework in terms of the types of activities we conduct and even the monitoring and evaluation of the activities we conduct at UNESCO in terms of ensuring that they are gender transformative in as much as possible. So how do we deal with the gender priority in the Science, Technology, Innovation Policy Program, which deals basically with supporting member states in their developing and their enhancement of their policies in science, technology, innovation? Well, we realize that one component that science, inclusive, sound, science, technology, innovation policies need is a component of policies towards gender equality. So gender equality is not something that we will just arrive to, but that is an object of policy. And member states need to be aware of the importance of bringing gender priority into their policies. But not only into their policies as in policy documents or big policy statements, but particularly into the implementation of those policies. How we go from declaration to actual effect, to actual change, to change in this case in terms of the gender equality, towards gender equality in science, technology, and innovation. So when we discuss the science, technology, innovation policies towards gender equality, there is frequently this idea that one could, just by saying that gender is a priority, that we are doing something. But it's clearly not the case. It's clearly that gender equality has many different parameters and that it requires a certain policy mix that addresses all the key parameters of, oh, now I have to speak, all the different types of parameters that gender equality is composed on. So in the SAGA project that also Alessandro will mention later, what we wanted to do, we have been tasked to do a gap analysis of policies in gender equality. And so we said, well, how should we do a gap analysis if we don't really know what the total universe looks like? So where is the gap? How to find the gap if you don't know exactly what the whole picture is? So that's when we looked at establishing what we, with one of the small publications that is, that will be available later, on a gender objectives list. So a list of all objectives that science and technology innovation policies should abort towards gender equality, and each of those objectives has a number of sub-objectives so that the classification is quite in detail. And basically for your, to understand what the more in concrete terms, what I'm talking about, we have divided these gender objectives into seven main objectives. First of all, the overall cultural stereotypes, the overall cultural issues in society. The second is what happens at the level of primary and secondary education. The third is higher education, where the, again, it's a totally different type of approach and where institutions such as universities play a very important role. The fourth is about the careers of scientists and engineers, and we focus in our approach a lot on that, on the careers. The fifth is about policy, no, about the content of research. So how to bring in more gender perspective into the content of research. The sixth is about the policymaking, how to ensure that gender is not, that women are represented in policymaking and that gender is part of the policies, as I mentioned before. And the seventh is about entrepreneurship and innovation. So those are the seven objectives. And what we're doing now is we are surveying countries about which policies they have in place for these different objectives, and we're also developing indicators on how to measure, to monitor and evaluate this. In that sense, how does that relate now to our current panel? Well, our, the work through UNESCO, we, as I said, through the UNESCO family approaches some of those objectives, and not all of them, but at least in this panel, we have very significant examples of some of the approaches that UNESCO and the family has taken towards gender equality. So I speak too much, so I'm sorry for that, but I get carried away. But I, my role here is to moderate, not to speak, so I will start now to really do the moderation by asking a few questions to the panelists, who are the ones who are supposed to speak. First of all, one of the most significant objectives that we have identified and that are really cross-cutting through all of the societies is the stereotyping, is the cultural bias, is the lack of role models. So in a sense, for Annie here, what are we doing in the UNESCO family towards overcoming stereotypes, towards promoting role models?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. For almost 20 years, L'Oréal Foundation and UNESCO have been committed to Women in Science to increase women working in scientific research by promoting women's scientific excellence, supporting female researchers, and fostering scientific vocations. If you ask someone in the street to name a women scientist, some of them might think of Marie Curie. Of course, Marie Curie was an exceptional role model, an exceptional scientist, the only person to have won two Nobel Prizes in two separate scientific disciplines. Unfortunately, that was 100 years ago, a very long time. We need more contemporary and more current role models. This is why since 1988, 98, sorry, the L'Oréal UNESCO for Women in Science Program has honored 97 laureates for groundbreaking discoveries or seminal contributions to their field of research. Two of our 2008 award winners, Adéonat, who will speak today, and Elizabeth Blackburn, went on to win Nobel Prizes in 2009. An important part of this program is to increase the visibility of women scientists through international ceremony and its press coverage. In mid-March of every year, a unique exhibition is organized in the streets of Paris, in the Paris airports, and for the first time this year at Dubai airport, to give visibility to women scientists. By showing the great scientific discoveries made by these women, our laureates become a new source of inspiration for future generations for more diverse and varied science. But even if these great researchers were once young scientists. At the L'Oréal Foundation, we believe that in order to support women scientists, we must go beyond grants and award ceremonies. The L'Oréal UNESCO for Women in Science Program has also supported more than 2,750 young fellows from around the world during their PhDs or postdoctoral research, at a most critical time when many young women might stop research. This program has become a major international initiative and is the result of a unique and long-term partnership with UNESCO and the L'Oréal Foundation. In 2017, 275 fellowships will be given through 48 national and regional programs covering 115 countries. Each year, 15 selected fellows also take part in the International Rising Talents Program, allowing them to access more funding and training. The program gives more than 2.7 million euros in fellowship each year, and since the beginning of the fellowship programs in 2001 in Poland, 24 million euros have been given to young women starting their careers. The L'Oréal UNESCO Program organizes mentoring sessions, personalized coachings, and trainings in communications, management, and leadership to give women scientists the tools to break the glass ceiling, and this is what makes our program unique. The program has been real career boosters. Some laureates and fellows have benefited from the visibility they were given; for others, the recognition has helped to boost their confidence and give them the push that they needed to reach for higher positions and increased responsibilities. Promoting women's scientific excellence and supporting female researchers are critical. But if we really want to close the gender gap in science, we need to reach out to young girls. We know that girls in middle school and high school often veer away from scientific careers because they do not, they sometimes lack in confidence, they do not have many, if any, role models, because stereotypes about science and women scientists are present and very strong, and of course, some inadequate perceptions of scientific careers. To address this program, we launched a new program called For Girls in Science in France in 2014. We've mobilized our for Women in Science fellows to visit middle and high schools all over France, for them to speak with students about their scientific careers, to break down stereotypes surrounding scientists and women scientists. Each year, more than 15,000 students, girls and boys, have met with for Women in Science fellows as part of this initiative. We're currently measuring the impact of this program, and we're hoping to roll it out internationally in the coming years. Life is full of setbacks, and in the past few months, we've seen a lot of them, but we will move forward. We will move forward because progress cannot be stopped, because we cannot afford gender inequality, because there are too many young, promising female researchers around the world, because the world needs science, and science needs women, because women in science have the ability to change the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. I think that sets the stage very well. The L'Oréal UNESCO Program really addresses the role models, the stereotypes, and also, to some extent, the primary education in its, in the For Girls in Science. So it's very interesting how already one program also, this is also, we have to look into it when we're looking from the policy side, that one program addresses different types of pieces of the puzzle. Maybe Naveen can, Naveen, sorry, Naveen can give us her personal perspective as one of the laureates?
Yeah, sure. First, good morning, everyone. It's actually very interesting that you asked me to speak right after Annie, because I could just back up what she said. So I won, well, I was notified that I'm the winner September 2016, because the award will be, you know, released. Well, I got a phone call that the press release is coming for the new year, and I knew I was a winner. Just a funny story there, I was really in the supermarket, I did not expect it, and I got the call and I was like jumping in the supermarket, very true. But what Annie said is actually so true, because personally, I, my career really benefited from the L'Oréal Prize. So scientifically, of course, in terms of publications and research, I've done, you know, quite a lot, and we're still doing more. But this, this award have changed essentially how I conducted more of my mentoring, because the, and probably I need to say this, part of the, we're given a big prize and part of it is dedicated to help us with our female in science activities. I could arrange more mentorship sessions with females from around the kingdom, not just, you know, my area. I did a lot with younger students, you know, younger females in high schools. We had a science fair, and you know, now essentially twice a week, I have meetings with 12th graders to help them with, you know, college applications and stuff like that. The funding was good in arranging workshops. So just really quickly, what Annie was talking about is actually coming true, because the number of graduate students, female graduate students, you know, in my university boosted up after the L'Oréal Prize. I got a lot of international applicants that wanted to work with me, and so the exposure is great, you know, when you highlight that, okay, you know, you have females doing great science, blah, 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 more people get inspired. So now we're up to 33% females, female graduate students, and that, of course, we're talking science and engineering. So our university is science and engineering. And so really quickly, what Annie just described to you really happens in life, if you do have programs like the L'Oréal UNESCO Program that actually gives, you know, kind of a good opportunity to showcase, to network, to mentor, then it will be very successful, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Naveen. It's great to hear it firsthand. It's also, it makes me think that I should have introduced you a little bit more, and I have here some notes, because you mentioned the kingdom, so I will just say that Naveen Kashab is Associate Professor in the Physical Sciences and Engineering Division at King Abdullah University of Science and Technology in Saudi Arabia, and that's what you refer to as the kingdom. So this, I think it's a context that was needed. I apologize for not having introduced you that way before, but I think that the examples that you're giving are very strong. How do you, how do you relate to that, Gloria, in your experience from Latin America? Sorry.
White, okay, well. Well, I'm going to say some, share with you some ideas from my own experience as researcher and as, I think, as mostly as researcher and also as trainer of, in this field in Latin America. I want to say some, some basic things, some conceptual things about what, for me, it means to gender equality in science and technology. And perhaps share with you some results on recent research projects that we have done in Latin America. As Ernesto was mentioning, gender equality is not gender parity. I mean, it's important because most of the times, because of the under-representation of women in all, globally, and in Latin America in particular, in some, in some sciences, some fields, physics is one, but not biology and not chemistry. So when we're in sciences, we need to disaggregate what, in which field of science women are not, are underrepresented. And of course, engineer is one, and computer sciences is one of the most crucial problems. But so what we say gender equality, what we have in our, what we think about, and many times, you think in women and parity. What Alonda Schibinger said, fix the numbers, you know, we're doing policies and programs to just fix the numbers, so achieve parity. But this is not, to me, this is not the main problem. I mean, it is, but we, but it's not the main problem. The main problem is how you change the culture of the institutions and the content of research and the methodologies you use and what you produce in technology. I mean, it's a whole systemic change that we need to develop if we really want not only a change on increasing the number of women, but changing science, so that science could be, as Ernesto was saying, and that's the view of UNESCO, we're talking about gender sensitive, gender responsive, and gender transformative. So that means many other things. So it has to reflect, when we say gender sensitive, we need the science and the technology that reflect the needs, the interests, the way of, the style of knowing of some women, and that's, that's one thing, you know, it must be reflect that. It must be responsive to the needs and the interests and the problems that women face in each context. Sometimes, I mean, there are problems that you don't have research that is dealing with those problems. And it needs to be transformative. Transformative of what? One of the things that in our research, we found that, well, access is a problem, but when women get into the university or get into those fields, what is happening to them? What are the problems they are facing? And one of the research project, and I will end with that, one of the research project that we did with women in engineering and in computer science, that they were a minority, and they, not only a minority in numbers, but they behave as a minority group. And how is, what is the behavior of a minority group? They try to adapt themselves to the culture, the dominant culture. There is a male-dominated culture, with its alliances, with its, you know, the exchanges of favors, of, where the, also with harassment practices, that when we interview those women, some of them say, well, well, at the beginning, they said, no, everything is okay, everything is okay. But no, everything is not okay, because the culture hasn't been changed. So I think that we need, I know the L'Oréal, UNESCO L'Oréal Award, and I think it was, has done a lot, a lot. But I need, and I was asking Annie before, are you thinking in a mentoring program? What kind of mentoring? Because it's not just to push women to enter this field, it's how you empower them, how you empower them to move through this, sometimes very hostile environment for women, so.
Thank you, Gloria. You're bringing up a couple of very important points, and I want to focus on one that we only, but that was not mentioned before, which is the harassment issue, and the American Geological Society has been working very strong on that one. But at the same time, I think we're not too far away from the Me Too, from a Me Too campaign about this. It will, it will come up.
It has to.
In science too, at some point. So I don't think we, this, that we're too far away from a Me Too in science. And hopefully, it will, it will provide the visibility to the harassment issue that has been already been made visible in some disciplines, but it's clear that it's not yet throughout the system, so that will help also launch some other processes. Now, you talked about, you asked what are the problems that women, girls studying, well, women studying in science, engineering face. What would, for you, in that sense, Naveen, if we, if I, if I take, sorry, I'm picking on you, but you are our laureate, so that's your work. What, how do you see that, the issue of, what were the barriers to your career? What difficulties did you have to overcome that were different from those from your male colleagues?
So essentially, I want to look at this and to, I divide them essentially two stages. The first stage was for me to start my career, so to go to graduate school and travel to the States. So as in the introduction, so I come from an Arabic, traditional Arabic family, my dad is Lebanese and my mom is Saudi. So the idea of a 20-year-old, 19-year-old, then by then, traveling to...
That's why they're married.
No, no, no problem. Okay.
If anyone was sleeping, it's something we do every half an hour.
Okay, so essentially, the first, you can say difficulty I had is mainly cultural, and probably this doesn't relate to all the girls in all the countries, but definitely relate to the Arab world, where, you know, traveling for graduate school is not, you know, very, it used to be, now it's much, much better, so now more females are going to graduate school. The second stage is after, actually, I succeeded and made it and now became an associate professor. I can relate to what Gloria said, because of course, in the chemistry department, there are 15 males and me. And so of course, you know, they have their own network, they have their own thing, and I need to prove myself. I remember the first faculty meeting that I had, a very nice professor, of course, he didn't mean it in a bad way, I didn't take it in any, you know, like, sense of harassment, but he asked me to take the notes for the meeting. So, and I told him, and he's my senior, I was an assistant professor when I joined, and he is a full professor, very established, but I was the only female in the room, and I think he wanted somebody to take the minutes. So he's like, just take the minutes for the meeting, and I was like, no, why don't you take the minutes for the meeting? So yes, it's not, I'm not going to say it's easy. You're by yourself, you need to have, and one of the things that I had to deal with is sensitivity, because, you know, we tend to be sensitive. So thick skin, this is what I worked on for the last seven years, is to grow thick skin and just, you know. So yes, in the workplace now, you know, you face different sets of challenges, different to the ones that made you go into science, this is what Gloria said. After you make it, you have a different set of challenges. One very important one is to actually, you need to hold your own. And from that perspective, I want to really go back also to the prize, because after the recognition that I, we got in, you know, it's really the exposure. People, you know, feel, oh, this is a very known person, we don't want to bother her. So you get some kind of, you know, backup, that, you know, nobody wants to deal with you at that point. But this is true. Having more recognition and more, you know, venues and showcasing strong females, you know, kind of backs you up. Now, even the dean will not say anything to me, he's like, oh, we have a, we're in the presence of a famous person. He's French, by the way. Yes, so yes, this is one of the main things that I have to deal with now, is really hold my own, you know, in my job, so it's different than before.
Thank you. Yes, maybe Annie, and then Gloria?
I just want to respond to what Gloria said a few minutes ago about training, mentorship. I think that is really, really key. And we often talk in the industry world or in business world of the kind of boys' club. I think we need to create the women's club, and women need to stick together, women need... And women need to stick together, women need to be in a network, they need to reach out to each other and show that they're not alone. And there are others in the same situation, they can reach out for support. The reason why I'm saying this is that we're we're trying to build our network. So next year is our twentieth anniversary. We'll have recognized, we'll pass the bar of three thousand women, and we have all of these extraordinary women scientists. We try to reach out to them once in a while, or they come back to us and give us some news. But one of our really big projects is to try to organize and animate this network. Because we have a lot of national, regional programs, some fellows are are just keeping in touch through social media and say, oh, I'm doing this, I'm going there. And and something is 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 just emerging, even it it's emerging by itself. So something is really happening. And and I think it's beyond us, it's beyond our program. But what we need to do now is help this network to organize itself and to facilitate the exchanges between people and organize mentoring, which is not a simple thing.
Annie, network is absolutely necessary. I mean, it's not a one woman's cause, it's it's a gender cause. And 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 so women should be together, working together and but in what sense? Because it's not only on on support, but to me, we we need to understand that gender equality or gender, I mean, changing gender inequalities is a redistribution of power, is a redistribution of power. And and we we need to be very conscious about that. We're talking about power. And 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 in that sense, network, I mean, networking and women mentors, women tutors, in in my own experience, and and working as as a as a mentor to other women, is to discuss that that particular thing. And you're going to find, as as you mentioned, this kind of things, take my notes or 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 some subtle things, not, I mean, the the main thing of a mentor is to raise awareness, raise awareness, help the young women or other to to raise their their awareness of their overt and the very subtle ways, very subtle sometimes, that where gender discrimination and gender stereotypes are are being in place. And and so it's not just to push them to to do their career, but say, well, look, you're going to find problems, you're going to find problems, those are the problems. Take your gender lenses, put your gender lenses and see, you're going to find. And so if you find those problems, let's let's talk on how to address those problems. And let's share our experience on how to address the problems that you will, you because you will face problems. Although you will have recognition, but not all have the same recognition. And so I think that this is, this is what I can I cannot do, but I agree with Annie about mentoring and networking, but also.
Thank you Gloria. I would like to point out this issue about unconscious bias.
Absolutely.
That was kind of hinted by Naveen saying that he didn't mean it. This this idea of, well, he didn't mean it, but there is an unconscious bias. So this is one of the issues that we have to address. Another, I like the protection idea that you're kind of protected by the the your aura of L'Oreal, UNESCO laureate.
And this is actually the point that if we have more programs like this, I think that would really empowers, you know, a lot of females. But I just wanna, sorry, comment on something Gloria said. Actually, it does take time, but so I've been working on an application for a female chemist to join the chemistry department for the last two years. Actually, just yesterday, I got an approval that they're gonna, you know, take her in. So that will, she would be the second female. So persistence is sometimes something that worked for me, that, you know, you just need to be pushy and not honestly just sit down. It's and say, oh, I'm a female, you know, things need to have. No, you just need to push more, work harder on things. And so far, and I don't consider it lucky, so I'm not gonna say I'm lucky, I worked hard for it. And I was really happy to see things maybe taking more than what they should, but eventually kinda falling in the right place. So that makes me kinda kinda hopeful that in the future, things will 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 maybe be better.
In the future, maybe we can aim at having a scientist's club and not a boys' or a girls' club in the long term future. But I think I wanted to exactly point out that the fact, out of the around forty, I did a very ballpark figure here, twenty-five percent are men and seventy-five percent are women. So it's actually pretty good in terms of for a gender and science workshop. And I think that that's part of the redistribution of power. The redistribution of power involves the involvement of both sexes in this. So it's it's very important to to have this dialogue in in these terms. Yeah, so now we've, yeah, please, yes.
Because what says we have to work hard, we have to be pushed, we have to push. I I have some concerns about that. I mean, because women need always to prove that we are capable, that we worked else, we we work a lot, we and that we are, I mean, it's proving, always proving. One research that we did with women as students in engineer and computer science, that's what they they were saying. I mean, yeah, well, I I have to prove, I have to prove that I'm competent, I have to prove that I work long hours, I have to prove that I can resist. But this is to me, something that need to be changed. I mean, we are as capable as men, some are some more and or less or medium, but I mean, we are. So I think that the one of the ways of working with women in in networks and in mentoring is thinking in your in yourself and in your career in in the framework of your rights. You have the right, you have the right to be there, you have the right, because you you have your career, you have you finish your career, you have the title, you have the competence, this is your right to 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 have access to some position. And not because you are working, demonstrating that you are capable and then having the the recognition, having the recognition. So I can, I'm not taking more time, but I can give you some very sad examples of of very capable women trying to prove all the time that they are capable to be recognized and to be promoted. And and to me, it was very sad to hear this kind of things.
Thank you Gloria, you're bringing up the rights issue. And I think that that's really also in the in the basis of this whole discussion, that the gender in science question is not only a practical question, as as it would be phrased perhaps in in the in the women in for Women in Science Program of L'Oreal UNESCO, where we say women scientists can change the world. So it's like a practical term. But there is the human rights approach to this, where it's it's both frequently, the argument is, well, if we want to have more scientists, we need more women. Yeah, okay, but that's like a practical approach to it. But there is the the human rights approach that should be where we anchor this discussion. And it should be an afterthought to to this, to the to the process. So so what we do we do Gloria? Once we we have, I think that this, the discussion up to now has been around the the issues, the the barriers, the drivers, as we as we call them. So how do we react to that from the policy side? What 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 can governments or institutions do to change this? Can I ask you something like that or?
No, I I think that, well, of course, I will read. No, what governments are doing, some governments are doing, some governments are doing, very briefly, and the challenges and the and the barriers. Well, of course, the some governments have been mentioned, I'm talking from large name, some governments are doing some things, some things, I mean, some policies, formal, whatever, but some things. Of course, the first step is to assure equal opportunities for men and women. So so is that the equality approach, no? To remove barriers, remove the barriers in access, in access to this, to careers, etc. And and that's good, that's good. But as I said, to me, there are other challenges. And the other challenge that is still to be held is create working conditions and cultures that allow men and women to have equally fulfilling careers. That to me is one of the main challenges. We need that, not only for 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 women, but also for men. We need to be to work in a in in another environment, not in in the kind of environment that we have. We need also, as you said, Ernesto, to address both women and men's reality realities and interest in 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 research content. That that's another challenge, that still is is far from being addressed, at least in 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 my region. And and I think in the EU is is discussed, but I don't know how many countries are incorporating gender perspective, gender dimension in 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 research. And and we need also research that consider gender specific interest and 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 of of men and women to be responsive. That means prioritize some some topics of research that are are not prioritized because they are not very much related with to, they're not related to men or they're more related to specific groups of 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 women. So it's it's a long way. And and to end, to end, because I I don't want to take a lot of time. But those things are are being developed. But with the problems, what are the problems? Resources. Sometimes all all those measures are are just formal, but not the resources are not there. And limited evaluation and monitoring. So they, we don't know what is the impact of that. And we need to know that there 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 go, that those kind of policies raises bigger resistances. It's not that they, you put it in place and then all people accept it. And why are those resistances? Because is it ever a change in the redistribution of power? So change means resistance, means conflicts. Nobody wants to lose, nobody want to lose their position, etc. So we need to know that this is going to happen and 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 include this in in the planning of policies. Well, I will stop here.
Thank you. I want to ask Annie to comment on how.
I was going to.
Yes.
There's one really important point that I I'd like to stress, and it's the importance of public and private partnerships. And the partnership that we have between the L'Oreal Foundation and UNESCO is a very, very interesting example of this. We need UNESCO for the data, for the information to to help push governments to measure and to have gendered information. On the other hand, what the L'Oreal Foundation brings in this wonderful partnership is communication and marketing power. We know how to do this well. And one of the ways that we can change this is really to talk about it, to name it, to point it out, and to put this in front of the general public. So for me, that is a very, very good example of a successful private-public partnership. Another one who is very interesting and is the one that concerns our Girls in Science Program in France. We have a partnership with the French Ministry of Education. And the French Ministry of Education opens the doors to the schools because as a corporate foundation, we cannot go into high schools. But because we have this partnership, they open the doors, they help us to go into high schools. On the other hand, we have access to this wonderful network of women in science fellows, and they can go to high schools. We help them to prepare a a methodology and one hour method that is designed to reach out to young students, to break the ice, connect with them, talk to them in their language, using their tools, being digital, and really having an impact. And we're also working with them to measure this. So these public-private partnerships, I think, are really, really key. Each one can bring something that's complimentary to the table.
Sorry, I'm relaxing and I don't even look at the microphone. Naveen, from from your point of view, do you see policies having an effect on, or specific policies that you can name, an effect on your career?
Well, if they work.
In a sense, if?
If they work.
If they were, okay.
You know, many countries and without, you know, just keep to my region, there are policies, but they're not, nobody, you know, put put them in place. So I hope they do in the future.
Thank you. That's totally. And I would, I think that Annie has introduced the issue of data and information. I think we should have practiced, if we had practiced this, it wouldn't have been so so well developed. Because exactly it's what Alessandro will present us now briefly, very briefly, so that we will have time for questions and answers. Ale will present one of the products, main products of the Saga project, which is the toolkit for measuring gender in science and technology.
Well, first of all, I'm really glad that I'm the last one to speak because I think that I'm gonna touch a few things that you already mentioned during at the beginning. First of all, I think that we need to give a message. We need women in science to achieve the SDGs. And but we also need to explain, meanwhile, I'm trying to find my presentation, it should be this one, that gender equality, it's not just, yeah, is this one? Yeah, it's it's not just a women issue. We need to have more men also, that they need to understand governments, business companies, they need to understand that it's not a zero sum game, but it's a win to win. So it's important to to also involve more women. That's why what Ernesto maybe was counting, he said that we have seven, eight men here. I think that we should have more. Well, I'm going to present to you, it's a gift that we brought, a toolkit to measuring gender equality in science and engineering. This toolkit, we have developed it in the market, in the framework of the Saga project. Saga stands for STEM in Gender Advancement. It's a UNESCO global project funded by SIDA. But before introducing it and before sharing it with you, I would like to share with you few numbers. We were discussing that at the global level, we only have twenty-eight percent in the world of researchers are women. And as you can see, the problem is that we have a great loss of women graduates in science before, during the transition to S and E workforce. Often, this is illustrated by this Cissor diagram. And so there is few challenges that we need, that need to be better understood to address the situation properly. But this this is just an average because if we, there are one-fifth of the countries, they have already reached gender parity. Gender parity means that women are between forty-five and fifty-five percent of the total researchers. But not at the highest level. So we have a problem because in every country, if we see the situation at the highest level, this arrow keep going up and this keep going down. So and you could see it during the first day, during the Jordan starts of science, where only one woman was permitted. So we have an issue, I think. And this is this is true for every, almost every country. We don't have all the data, and this is a problem, that's why we need more data. But usually, this is the situation. So and as Gloria already said, we also have a problem of horizontal segregation. We have problem in engineers, we have problem mathematics, we have problems in computer science. So when we started this project, we we thought, okay, this is the situation, we need to revert it. But we need also to have indicators, to have better indicators, to understand what the barriers are, what the drivers are, and to also to have. barriers are, what the drivers are, and to also to have policies that are evidence-based. So, and we also see, so that there is a limited availability of concrete methodology for evidence-based policymaking. So that's why we developed this toolkit, which will allow countries in the design of gender-sensitive and transformative and evidence-based policy, and also to improve the measurement. As you can see, we have two aspects, indicators and policies. Well, as Ernesto said, this is structure around the T goal. These are the seven areas, the seven objectives that Ernesto was mentioning. And, well, we think that we need to have a holistic approach. If we want to have more women in science, if we wanted to have more women at the highest level, if we want to reach gender equality, not only gender parity in terms of numbers, but also gender equality, we need to work, we need to have policies and instruments implementing these policies that are addressing all of this. We need to have an holistic approach. We need to engage women in primary education, in STEM and primary education. We need to retain women in STEM in higher education, the career progression. You will have all this, because each of these T goals, of this objective, has different subitem. And I will share with you at the end of this session, a working paper which contains everything. This is, for us, it should be a guide for policymakers. So going to the tools that we have developed in the framework of this Saga toolkit, we have different tools aimed at having monitoring, on one hand, monitoring STI policy towards gender equality. First of all, we need to map what's going on. We need to map what institutions are doing, what governments are doing, based on these seven areas. So we have developed a matrix that helps us to link the T goals with the instruments and the policies. And this will help policymakers to identify where the gaps are, which is the first step. So also, we have developed two gender equality footprints, and this will allow, provide a graphic expression of the policies, the instrument focused on gender equality. They are based on qualitative and quantitative parameters. I'm trying to be as fast as possible. Oh, this is another important metrics. As we were saying, we need indicators. We need indicators to have best policies. And so we have developed this matrix, and we are developing new, also new indicators, new indicators for these T goals, which means, for example, that we need to look at the share, the total and share of women researched by seniority, grades, age, fort, as already we are doing. But we also need to find new indicators, as for instance, the total and share of male speakers invited for trainings in conferences, panels, and workshops. And this matrix contains different indicators. It's not a complete and full list, and we are piloting it. I will be back to this point later. And also, what we are, what we are, what you could find, can find in this toolkit, it's also that there are different sources of information available. But most of policymakers, most of users, they don't know how to use them. So we are providing methodology guidelines and recommendation also on how to produce better indicators. So this is another tool that we have developed, which is part, should be used along with this toolkit. And it's a survey. As I was saying, it's important to map what's going on. And we have developed this tool, this survey, that will, is to map what institution are doing, what governments are doing. It collects information, but not only at policy level, but also at the instruments, what they are really doing. So, and this is something that, it's another tool that we have, and that it's, I think that it's complementary with the L'Oréal UNESCO. L'Oréal UNESCO, it's a great prize, we need role models. But we also need to understand why there are, a lot of women are dropped out from careers. What are the drivers? What are the barriers that are facing? So, and this survey, it collects, it can be used at government level, but also at institutional level. It can be sent by, for students, but also for researchers. And with this survey, we are aiming at having data. We don't want only to say, okay, I have faced this. We only, we really want to have data. So, and this is a tool that will allow us to have this data. So if I have two minutes more, just to say that all this methodology, one minute, okay. We're working together, it's a sound methodology, because we are partnering with a lot of institutions. Gloria Bondar is part of our advisory committee, but we have the CHOPA, yes, we have the European Commission, Gender Insight, UN Women, etc. And another point that it's important, it's, are perfect tools? No, they are not. We are piloting them. But we had to start from somewhere. So we're piloting, we are trying to have a better overview, having different countries from different regions of the world. Here are just a few of them, but also from different institutions. So if you are interested, if you're interested in implementing it at university level, for example, you can do it. Here, it's where I will share with you the Saga toolkit now, but you can also download all of the instruments, all of the surveys that we have developed on our website, or you can write to us to ask for more information. Well, thank you.
This is the toolkit, I have a few copies here for you. Thank you, Ale, and sorry for pushing with the time, but I think we, well, first of all, yeah, the privilege of those that are sitting in the first row, they are already grabbing the publication. It's fresh from the oven, so really, it hasn't been shown before, and we were waiting for this World Science Forum to launch this very, very important publication. And I want to, I want to acknowledge not only Gloria as part of our steering committee, but also Lydia here, President Lydia Brito, who is one of the mothers of this project. So it's really a very, very important project for us. And thank you, Ale, for that presentation. I think we have, we still have some 25 minutes for questions. Since Lydia was my boss until very, very, only a few months ago, I have to give her the first one, but maybe we start then, yeah. Lydia, and then we go this way and...
Thank you very much. And, well, I was his boss, but maybe soon he will be my boss, so. That's the nice part, it's about that you can exchange bosses, roles, and that sounds fine. More than questions, I think there are two. Lydia Brito, I'm the regional director for science for UNESCO, for Latin America and the Caribbean. And like Ernesto said, I was the director for science policy, when we designed, together with Ernesto, that was in Montevideo at the time, we designed the Saga project, and then finally, we got the money and the implementation, and we are still implementing together. But two comments. One is to you, Gloria, in responding and understanding what you were saying, perseverance is very important. Perseverance doesn't mean that we have to prove, it means that we don't quit. And I think that's very important. When you want to defend the space, and I would say that it's not just for women, it's for our values, it's for what we believe, it's not about working all the time and having to prove. No, it's I don't quit. You may not be listen to me, but I am going to continue to speak about it. And I think that was your point, and I truly, truly believe that you are right. And I mean, we are continuing to do so everywhere. So, and so just to clarify, because I thought you were thinking about working hard, I don't think that was the message. The message was perseverance, and I think that's important. The second one, and I think, Ale, you spoke a little bit about that. I think the change has to start with our universities. And Gloria, our universities. Gloria, you remember the experience in UNAM, in Mexico, with the very nice center on gender? And just the fact that we had researchers doing research on gender issues in the university, it did change the gender policies in the university. And I think this is the beautiful work you guys are doing, the share, in our region, because you are promoting research centers on gender in the universities and in the research centers, putting the gender as a research subject. And that is really, really changing the policies of the institutions much faster than you can do national policies. And I think this goes back to this idea that we really need to make sure that women scientists and women in science and engineering, they are visible, but they are visible in their institutions. If they are not visible in their institutions, they will not be visible in their countries, in their region. So I think the issue of policy is very much like Saga permits, also to work at the institutional level, university research center level, and then, of course, fighting with governments. But, and maybe that's something that the L'Oréal Foundation could also support, support these groups, and in Latin America, we have quite a few, that are already doing quite interesting research, and they are changing the policies in their institutions, and their institutions are becoming much more gender-sensitive, and the students that are graduating those institutions, future leaders, they are much more conscious of gender issues. So just two comments, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lydia. I will go this way, if you don't mind. I think you had a question.
Thank you. Well, part of the answer was given by Lydia, sorry, sorry. Yeah, sorry. Dominique Le Glue, I'm the head of two magazines about science in France, one which is more aimed at researchers, called La Recherche, The Research, and the other one aimed at the general public, and we have two million readers and two million on Facebook. And my question is more a sort of general question. After all you said and explained, because it's a question of sharing power, what are the best levers, when you talk to ministers or head of states, to convince them it's a good thing to engage in gender equality, or, I don't know, you have all sorts of wording that we have to learn, what might convince them? And I ask this question because, first of all, it's not obvious that they care about science either. So science plus women in science, that's a lot for them to understand. So what are the best wordings to convince them? Thank you.
Before I give the floor, I actually think that this is, it's a great idea for a crowdsourcing exercise through Twitter, and since now we can even use 280 characters, we could, we could launch an idea, well, in one tweet, convince your president to work on gender equality in sciences. Maybe we can do that even together. Maybe you have more concrete responses to this.
I'm not sure if it's a response, but what we see in the business world is when you start talking about productivity, about increasing business, people listen. So if we can try and use this type of, let's say, discord in French, concepts, I think, and talk to governments and say, if you do this, things will be better, and you can measure it, and you have more productivity, you'll be more efficient, I think if we use these words, it should have an impact, because everyone wants to make more money, everyone wants to be more efficient. So for me, that could have an impact.
But sorry, if may I, there are already a few studies showing that, that in companies where they have gender parity, I mean, or gender equality in policy level, but they have a highest level of productivity. So there are already studies showing that. How to transform, to turn that into...
To turn that into the famous elevator pitch, and that's where the studies, and that brings us even to other sessions about the science policy interface. Finally, we're talking here about the certain, a certain type of science policy interface, where the science about gender in science has to meet the decision-makers. So I think we're, it's a very interesting point that we will not solve today and tomorrow, but maybe we can really get to, I really throw this idea of doing a crowdsourcing, let's see what people can come up with, and let's see if we can find a good, do a good job on key messages. May I pass to another one of the senior people at UNESCO involved in this, Macheen Nalish, who also was the director of science policy?
Yes, my name is Macheen Nalish. I was for 15 years directing a division for basic sciences and science policy as well at certain moment. And from the beginning, I was in the team constructing the Laurel UNESCO Prize. And my comment is the following, partially answering your question as well. Why this program was so successful? I think the main issue from the very beginning was to put emphasis on scientific quality of the candidates, because scientific quality of the candidates defends the entire issue by itself. You don't need to use any other arguments. As Niveen was saying, because she is good, they have no arguments. And the fact that she was becoming a laureate was not because she is a cousin of a cousin, but because an international jury of highest-level scientists nominated her to this award. And let me say, we were particularly proud that two of our laureates got Nobel Prize. And in our rules, when we established the program, was clearly said, nobody who already has a Nobel Prize can apply to Laurel UNESCO Award. At the beginning, it sounded like a joke, because people thought we are stupid, thinking that it will ever become a popular program. Few years later, we said, look, how intelligent we were to write it down, because we could nominate Ada Ionat and Elizabeth Blackburn, who next year after that got a Nobel Prize, and reverse would not be possible. So I am proud that this is flying so well, and congratulations to Annie and the new team in Laurel and the new team to UNESCO. Strong, strong go forward. It's very important.
Thank you, Mache. Next row, next row. Welcome back.
I am Marcia Barbosa, physicist from Brazil.
Another laureate, another laureate, yes, thank you for being here.
My question is, when Saga will be available to Brazil, I'm envious of Argentina and Uruguay, but next, will the data be open so we can analyze other countries? Because the big issue is, even if I convince the university to have a policy or a government, my question is, which policy works? And your data will be wonderful to understand which will be the policies that will work. So will be open?
Thank you. I want to, I want to take that opportunity to inform that only two days ago, at the UNESCO General Conference, we heard from the Argentinian representative that the data will not only be available and open, but they are on the 10, one of the 10 points of open government in Argentina, of the open government program, it will be the women in science data that are being produced through the Saga. So it's been put into the high-level government priorities for open data. So...
... Exactly.
So, the which policy works is a different question, because of course, policies work in certain contexts, so this will be always a difficult question, but we hope to be able to help responding to that. Thank you, thank you. And welcome, Marcia, and thank you very much for being here with us. Yes.
I want to complement what Annie was saying. What, the argument that Annie was, I don't know, promoting, what was mentioning on how to sell this idea to policymakers. this idea to policymakers, and that's what we call the business case, the business case, this approach, the business case. So we sell it, and it's going to be, increase their productivity, increase their quality, increase blah, blah, blah. That's one thing, one possibility. But I would also like to add another perspective, and I think the media is extremely important. So it's a bottom-up perspective, it's not just, well, this is going to raise the productivity. But if you make commitments publicly, I mean, media will cover the awards, or we cover more, and we work with the media, and we work with the community, not only with the mass media, but also the social networks. I mean, let this message of equality flow, and policymakers are very much interested in addressing messages that are a part of the key messages in the media. So I think this is one, another strategy, no?
Yes.
I'm talking about, I don't know if some of you have seen Al Gore's movie last night? If you haven't, please go and see it. He says something at the end, I think is very, very strong, and basically, he says, but, sorry, these are my words, but if the leaders and policymakers don't do the job, people and citizens will.
Exactly.
And I think that is so strong. So as you were saying, media, social media, change will come from people. And with the whole climate change, and what is going on, and what Mr. Trump is doing, if you look at American cities, they're doing it. They are doing it. So change will come from people.
And talking about social media, Marga has asked for the floor, maybe you can comment on that one?
Hi, I'm Marga Walsera, I'm with AAES. I want to congratulate this panel and the setting for this wonderful room, and the UNESCO team for the SAGA project. So I want to talk about, a little bit about the, so I have a combination of a question and a comment. Social media, but also this idea of surveys and data, right? And something that ties the Me Too movement on social media, that harassment that Ernesto mentioned, the power dynamics that Gloria mentioned, and the data, and the need for more evidence-based for addressing the problem. So the Me Too campaign in the US started two years ago with Berkeley, the first professor that was accused of harassment, and so it's been going on for two years, and it's been now elevated by the other fields where women suffer this discrimination. But the data about this harassment is already there. So my first question to Ale, is SAGA planning to incorporate those studies and those surveys? So NSF reported that between 40 and 70% of women in science have experienced harassment at any point of their career, 1/3 of women in medicine have experienced, and 2/3 of women in field research, even in Antarctica, have experienced harassment. So how is that, and I sent you, we talked about that on Sunday, and there is an excellent policy forum last week, Scientific American, 27th of October, summarized all the studies that have been done so far, so that's very convenient for us to understand the landscape and the data that's already been done. But my question is about surveys. So most of this data relies on self-reporting, and we know that self-reporting is very, can be very inaccurate as well because of fear of retaliation, and as the power dynamic that Gloria was mentioning. So if we rely on self-reporting surveys, but we know that women can be victim blamed, and all these other punishments that can happen, how can we have a better metrics and indicators? And that goes for all the panel, but especially Gloria and Ale. Thanks. And if you want to see the Me Too campaign, this is on Twitter, social media, and really having that global conversation, more than 5 billion hashtags is really changing. It's a sea change, it's a wave that I really think is going to make an impact, so.
Well, first, I want to congratulate all you for this program. I am Estero Rosco from Mexico, I'm also Laureate, our, in 2006, I think. Well, I want to inform you that in Mexico, UNESCO, the director of UNESCO Nurea Science, is carrying out a very nice program to take science for little kids, for kinder women, girls. And he has called a number of scientists and people, I mean, influential people from society, to make this program, that is being, I think, very, very successful. And I believe that the moment, the time to teach girls to learn science and to feel better with themselves is just in the kinder time. We believe that this program will give very good results in the future. We have to hope, but I think that is important, you to know this, what UNESCO is doing in Mexico.
Thank you. Maybe you pass to Tarek there behind you?
Tarek, I'm here, Strat Clyde. I'm going to make an observation and a query. My observation is, I had the good fortune of being on the jury for the Laureate Prize for Britain, and we looked at all sorts of interesting parameters and conditions, and it's the first time that I learned that the Laureate Prize not only gives you patina, it also gives you protection. So that's something worthwhile noting. My question really was that, I was in a panel for women in engineering earlier on here, and a concern that was raised over there was that so few women are taking up subjects that are related to engineering. Having said that, and this is really towards your SAGA database, what we found was that in different parts of the world, there's a different emphasis, and it surprised me, at least because my background is from somewhere totally different, that there are many more girls taking up engineering in the Middle East than boys. It's an amazing thing, whereas in Western Europe, if you have about 10 to 15% girls in engineering subjects at university, it's a rarity. So I wondered if your database would be able to kind of address those kind of, tease out those solutions for issues such as that?
Thanks, Tarek. I will quickly react to that one and to Marga. I think that part of the issue is that we, sometimes we get stuck into looking at the number of students or even graduates, but then if we look into the careers and see where then the development of the careers, that seems to be quite constant throughout the world, reversing frequently those, the figures that happen through the education system. So, and that's what we're trying exactly to understand, really to shed light on. And to Marga, yes, exactly, the self-reporting is an issue, particularly when you have to identify yourself. In surveys, this gets a kind of a different treatment. So the idea is that we will be able to obtain some information. However, it is very difficult in terms of survey design, how to write a question regarding to harassment, how to evaluate the responses. It's a very tricky, even the wording of a question regarding harassment has huge challenges technically, yeah, that go beyond what we're discussing today, but in terms of survey methodology, that to actually obtain relevant information. So, but we haven't found a clear, I mean, we're working on that, we're working on the wordings and so on, but not sure how far we will get. We hope that sort of lead will be better than the self-reporting.
Yeah, may I add something on this? We have one of the modules of the survey, it is specific on harassment, but not only on sexual harassment, on different kind of harassment. Yeah, retaliation, that is, yes, it's a natural problem, especially when you have a small scientific community.
Thank you. We have, we haven't reached the back, apparently, so please, you choose. I'm afraid to choose. Last row, last row first. There, yes.
Hi, thank you. My name is Laura Campbell, I'm from the US National Science Foundation, and I just wanted to mention, we have a program called Advance, that is about institutional change. We started with giving fellowships to individual women, which of course is an awesome thing to do, and found that it really wasn't going anywhere very fast. And so we turned in change, turned to large institutional awards that are about creating that institutional change. And to an earlier question, it's really paid off in high dividends because of the additional retention that these programs have led to, not just of women faculty, but of men faculty. Because as you implement programs that ensure time with your family, parental leave, just a culture of inclusion and friendliness that supports the full employee, the employees are more happy, they're more productive, and they don't quit to go to another institution. And what we're hoping is that it's actually spilling across other institutions, because as they compete for desirable employees, they're like, well, if that university has all these programs, we better have it too, or they won't come and work for us. But one alarming thing that I wanted to ask you about is that some of the, oh, and also Advance, if you just Google "Advance Portal," all kinds of toolkit information is available about some of the specific interventions that have been effective, that you might want to try yourself. But one alarming thing that has come from the data, there've been a lot of studies about the ways in which we all internalize bias, you know, the CVs, where if you just change the name, all of us women also think that the women applicants are not as qualified? Well, it turns out that those very studies are viewed less favorably by men than by women. So many men, when they read that same study, they think that the evidence is less credible than the women do. So we have some big problems there, and I wonder if you have any thoughts about how we can help to change our own communities?
We will, I want to just, we have two more Laureate fellows in the room, and I would like to give them, Laureate UNESCO fellows, I would like to give them the word. Bilge is there? She has the mic.
Coincidence.
We have been planning this very well, again.
Yes, evidently. I'm Bilge Demirkas, I'm last year's rising talent, and I know Annie since a few years, it's been a pleasure. I'm here with the Global Young Academy, and I would like to draw some attention to the fact that we might be doing too much with policy. On Monday, I had a very interesting encounter, where a very traditional-looking, I would say, or traditionalist male approached me, and he said that I'm just too, you're just too young to be here. So he just, he told me flat out that I'm just too young to be here. And I found, I had, I had an inkling that he couldn't say, because I'm a female, maybe, it was a female thing, but then there's so much awareness around the female thing, that now a lot of it is, I've experienced this, not, this is not a singular event. I'm experiencing that now it's becoming ageism. It's changing shape. If the society hasn't internalized a concept, and I agree that the Me Too campaign is excellent, it's raising a lot of awareness, but I have a feeling maybe some of these policies have not been internalized, and therefore it's just changing shape, and it might present itself in a different form. And I would like to thank UNESCO and Laureate for awarding me this prestigious award, and it's really helped my career. But still, the dangers are there. Thank you. Who do I give this to next?
Did you suggest that the other person was too old to be here?
Excuse me?
Did you just suggest the other person that maybe he was too old to be here? In mental terms? Thank you.
That you give a space for very experienced people to talk, but I think we should also take in care of that transgenerational talk, and give a space also for the young to talk sometimes. Thank you for focusing the group to talk about solutions. Many times, we have a panel that we just talk about the problems of females in science, and we are all nodding for 90%. So I want to talk about two solutions, one in the developing countries and one in the developed country. In Australia, they have the SAGA problem, the SAGA project, and what they do is to do, give ranking to different universities. So in the same way that you give green color to best practicing, and green, how green you are, now you're giving ranking for how good you are in practices for gender equality in universities. They are opening positions specifically for this, for women to be the leaders leading this. In Latin America, in Peru, in August, the president decreed that all the institutions from the government must have a gender committee. This was approved in August, and in September, I was hired to be part of this gender equity thing. In one month and a half, we have already changed the face of Oefa, which is where I work, because 90% of the image was male, portraying males, in the advertisement, in the promotional videos. Now we have include inclusive languages in the communications. We have a report that is going to be finished about what's the state of gender equality in our institution, and we're going to have in the website, a section that talks about women in Oefa. So I think these are like small practices that we can bring to our countries and push for being established. Thank you.
Thank you, Clarissa. It's a good way to close. We are, I'm receiving all type of signals from the back, that it's five plus one, they don't know how to stop us. I'm sorry for that. I know that it's good to see that you prefer to be in this meeting than at lunch, so thank you for that. I think though we have to close, we can close also on the note that at 4:30, there will be a Young Scientists Panel. We've been insisting to turn, to turn away from Young Scientists panels to Young Scientists everywhere, but it's not an easy change. We will have the, at 4:30, the plenary, it's a plenary session of young scientists. So I invite you to follow up this conversation, the generational gap, discuss this during that session. And tomorrow, we will have also a series of session in the Gender Summit platform, where Marcia will be there, quite a number of us will be there, Minister Pand, a number of very high-level people talking about, and also hopefully looking for solutions, as Clarissa is putting it. So, thank you very much. It's difficult to wrap up this panel, because it was extremely rich. Thank you, everyone, and I would like to have another hour to discuss, but we have to go. So thank you very much, and thank you to all the panelists. Thank you.